Up a little more, please, yes. A little, no, a little louder.
How about this?
So, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Daryl Hoffmeyer and an invocation by Pastor Larry Jamison from the Life Gate Four Square Church.
Would everybody rise and face our flag and let's move with those that are serving our country and our police officers watch over them. I pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of our Lord and our Savior Jesus Christ.
Well, for once, I have my back to you instead of the audience out here. So, well, it's good that we're here tonight. Let's go before the Lord and pray for His goodness to shine over us tonight. Heavenly Father, we are so grateful to You and we come to You in the mighty name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. You are a wonderful God. You've blessed us and we, first of all, just want to praise You for all the great things that You have done in our city, all the great things You have done in our personal lives and throughout the world. God, we also realize that there are so many things that we can cry out for. The things that have happened in our schools as of late, the Lord, have been devastating. And we ask that You would protect our kids, protect us here in Paramount. May We, may You just cover our kids, our families, not only at the schools, but in the streets and at their homes and their neighborhoods. And You bring great protection and great safety over them. We thank You for our police force and for our fire department, how they bring safety to us and help us in so many ways. We ask Your safety over them, that You would give them guidance and understanding on how to do their jobs so well, that we are the recipients of that blessing. But, Lord, pour out Your life upon them and keep them well and healthy. We thank You for our City Council that continually direct the affairs of this city. And their heart, every one of them, their heart is to benefit the residents here, that we can do better, that we can succeed, that we can prosper, that we can have great success in all things that we touch, and that this city would just continue to grow and be a model city for this area, and that the people who reside here would feel safe, healthy, and well in every aspect. Lord, we give You praise tonight for Your goodness upon us as decisions are going to be made or things are going to come up on the agenda for the council to think about in respect to our city. We ask that You would guide them by Your Holy Spirit and that they would make decisions that would honor God and honor all people. We give You thanks and praise for this night in Jesus' name. Amen.
We'll call the council members, please.
Councilmember Hansel.
Here.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Lemmons.
Here.
And at this time, we're going to have some presentations, so if councilmembers would like to join me at the diners. Tonight, we want to give special recognition to some great members of the Paramount community. As the discoveries regarding elevated levels of hexavalent chromium were made in late 2016, one of the ways the city took action was by forming the City Council Air Quality Subcommittee. This panel was designated to study the issues related to metal businesses and come up with ideas to reduce problems in the future. A number of individuals from our community served on the subcommittee along with Vice Mayor Martinez and Councilmember Hoffmeyer. Tonight, we want to thank them for their feedback, their insight, and judgment in helping to improve Paramount. If you were able to join us tonight, please come up when your name is called. Paramount residents Guillermo Parga and Mauricio Hernandez. Former resident Jaclyn Avila. Public Works Commissioner Rosemary Vasquez. For her Public Works Commissioner Alex Garcia. In annual, important church pastor Rudy Rubio. And PUSD Superintendent Ruben Frutos. Their work has been very productive and a number of measures were developed. For instance, they made suggestions to our zoning regulations that will control potential sources of pollution in the future. There is still work to be done, but the actions of these folks will help produce significant improvement in Paramount's air quality. We appreciate your dedication to our community. Thank you very much.
We're good, yeah, we're gonna take his.
Yeah, we don't need to hold.
We're good.
Something I didn't mention in the presentation about these wonderful people who did this for us is they gave up about a year of their time to come to the subcommittee meetings and to answer resident questions, so that's just some real dedication. And again, thank you, thank you very much. Is Georgina here? Sure? Okay, so we're gonna skip ahead to Women's History Month. We are proud tonight to recognize March as National Women's History Month. During this celebration, the city honors the lasting contributions that women have made to the growth and success of our country over its long history. Women's History Month is also a time to applaud the Paramount Women's Club, an important group of residents who, over the years, since 1926, have promoted education, health, and civic improvement for the local women. If there are any members of the club present at this time, please come forward. The club's good work includes volunteering at the library, helping families and children during the holidays, assisting students in education through its scholarship program, and other supportive efforts. In addition, they are working with our younger generation through the city's Youth Commission. It's my pleasure to give this city's proclamation to the Paramount Women's Club. Okay, March is also Safe Communities Month, during which time we focus on our commitment to public safety as one of our number-one priorities. We have partnered over the years very successfully with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department to create innovative law enforcement programs, many of which have been reproduced in other cities. This proactive approach includes outreach to our residents and our businesses. Whether it's a neighborhood watch or stressing the importance of reporting criminal activity to the sheriff's station, all of this is highlighted in Safe Communities Month. Please welcome Captain James Wolak of the Sheriff's Department to accept our proclamation.
Well, on behalf of the brave men and women that are signed to Paramount Station, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation. I've said it before, over the past 25 years, when it comes to public safety, the city of Paramount has been nothing short of a miracle. And the reason for that miracle is the great partnership we've had with the public safety team. John Moreno's been there the whole time, and now Adriana Lopez we work with, and it is a wonderful partnership. This city council has been incredibly supportive of us. They give us the resources we need, and the benefactors are the residents here in Paramount. While most communities in Southern California had an increase in crime last year, Paramount had a decrease. So far this year, we have about a 25% decrease, once again, in crime, and we'd like to keep that momentum going. So, things are going well, and I appreciate this city. I have a special place in my heart. This is where I grew up as a deputy, this is where I came back as lieutenant, and now I'm blessed to come back as your captain. So, thank you very much. God bless all of you, and Quee Devaibean.
We're just gonna take his pictures. Yes, we're good.
Next, we'd also like to recognize March as American Red Cross Awareness Month. Most of us know that valuable services the Red Cross performs: relief to victims of disaster, emergency preparedness, CPR and first aid instruction, swimming lessons and water safety classes, blood drives, and much more. The city has a very good relationship with the Greater Long Beach Chapter to provide services and training for our residents. During Red Cross Awareness Month, and in fact, throughout the year, we urge everyone to give their support to the local chapter. With us tonight is Red Cross volunteer Paul Conrad to accept our proclamation. Is Paul here? So, Paul's not here. Okay. We do have Alex Garcia, who served on the subcommittee, who just came in to join us. Alex, if you'll come up so we can recognize you, thank you. Thank you, guys, thank you. Okay, we have one more presentation to make, but she hasn't arrived yet, so we'll come back when she does to complete that. In the meantime, we'll continue with the meeting. Thank you. So, at this time, we have City Council comment for public updates.
Yes, Madam Mayor, at the February 20th, 2018 council meeting, Ms. Sandra Dekay addressed the city council. She had issues with speeding and street racing in her neighborhood. As a result, the deputy in charge of traffic safety for the Lakewood Station area came out and met with Ms. Dekay at her home, and he discussed with her enforcement requests and possible traffic control devices. As a result, traffic enforcement will be increased by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, and also the request for traffic control devices is being handled by the Public Works Department. And that concludes this item.
Okay, thank you, John. So, we're gonna move on to the consent calendar, and...
Public comments.
Oh, I apologize, public comments before we go to the consent calendar. So, if you'd like to address the council, please come forward at this time. Do we have cards?
We do, Madam Mayor. We do have one from Mr., first one is from Mr. Richard Griffin from Chester Street, and Mr. Griffin would like to discuss with the council things about family and business.
Richard Griffin, Chester Street, Paramount. I was inspired when Peggy Lemmons was retiring, and I wanted to bring up something I don't think we talked enough about: family and business in Paramount. In 1950, my dad and mother came to Paramount. They started a business called Griffin's General Merchandise. That building still stands on 15338 Garfield. It's the building that's next to Golden State Engineering. It's probably one of three of the oldest buildings still left in Paramount. From there, they went and started, from general sales, they went to doing wash machine, and washing and being repaired. They also, my dad also did a lot of refrigeration repair. Back there in the old days, the city took care of itself. My parents taught me, you know, always work within the city, buy within the city, and my dad did a lot of refrigeration for McCoy's Market, Gillan Market, Farmer's Boys Market, where today, we outsource so much, we forget that there's a core of people in Paramount that support Paramount. They then went into the Volkswagen business. It was Griffin's VW parts. Then a letter from a lawyer from Volkswagen came, and then became Griffin's parts for Volkswagen. From there, the business moved from 15338 Garfield over to Paramount Boulevard. I drew a blank on address. It's a building across the street in Chernobyl Chamber that says the words on it. Then we went to 7311A Madison Street. We flourished good. We believed in, my dad believed in Paramount. I was born, I was a home birth in Paramount, and I just want to say that I'm proud of my parents who had their business for 67 years. It has officially closed, so there is no more Griffin's. But I'm still here, whether that's any good or not, but I'm still here. And I also have my own business, which I can't believe is going to be gone 40 years here. I was impressed with all the people who said nice things about you, but we have to remember that it's not the city that makes the citizens, it's the citizens that make the city. And it's a business.
Richard, you have to wrap it up for me, please. You have to wrap it up for me, please.
Okay, I've got 30 seconds. We are Paramount. I just want to say thank you for all the things that you've done to make Paramount better. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Our next, yes, we have two more. Our next speaker is Mr. Ardi, and he would like to address the council about making Paramount better.
How are you, councilman? So, I was thinking, I wanted to make Paramount better, and I'm new here, I don't know if you remember me from before, and I was just thinking of how do I make Paramount better? I just wanted, again, kind of follow up on the positivity and bring new ideas to the table, and forgive me if you guys have spoken about this before, I'm new to the city, I don't know what's all going on, but I thought of stuff that kind of would help make us better in terms of being an attraction, and I'm a branding guy, I'm a big marketing guy, and I just feel we don't have a brand necessarily. So, I thought, how do we make our brand better? How do we get, I don't just want the people of Paramount's money, I want the people of Downey's money, I want the people of Long Beach's money, I want everybody's money. So, I thought, well, let's think of some smart ways. And I, the other day, a couple weeks ago, I spent $500 in a restaurant in Downey, me and my friends went, and it all started from a Facebook ad I saw. And the Facebook ad was a steakhouse, and the steak looked delicious. It was about the size of my face. And I drove down with all my buddies, waited, we drove about 20 minutes to get to Downey, 45 minutes in line, had the steak, spent the money, and I gave him a five-star review, all because of a 10-cent ad that that person from that business put up to engage me, to toss away 500 bucks with a smile on my face. And I thought, well, why don't we, why can't we, as a city council, or in some ways, help our local businesses out? And I checked their social media, and it wasn't good, not because I don't think their food was good, maybe they don't know how to do these things, how to make a nice trailer, how to show their steak the size of my face, to not only get me to come, but to get everyone else to, to get Downey's money, to Long Beach money, so to create that branding, and I think not only just for local businesses, like as a city. I know people will spend endlessly their money on a kid-friendly place, a dog-friendly place. Those two, for sure, will get people to, again, come to Paramount and spend endless money, so we don't just rely on our local people, we can rely on the outside community. And one thing I thought, those three innovative things from cities that I liked, that we can try to implement, and if you guys are doing it, that's great, I'm sorry, I'm ignorant to it, when I lived in Irvine, the streets were just paved beautifully, and that just gave an ambiance to the place. Downtown Culver City was an absolute dump when I was a kid. Ladies of the night and drug dealers wasn't there when I was a kid. Now, it's the most poshest place to be, great restaurants. And one last thing before I go, I know we all talk about air quality, and we all want the air quality to be better, so I Googled some stuff, saying, how do we make the air quality better? And there's, in China, they have this thing called the vertical forest, which there's a building where it's pretty much a forest. And how great would it be if there was like a downstairs restaurant, and then, and then, you know, we just show them the tour of the place, and then it also cleans up the air, obviously, I'm not a scientist, but carbon dioxide, oxygen, that stuff happens, makes the air clean, how great would that be? Thank you for your time.
And I would just like to let you know, Mr. Ardi, there are some of those issues that you brought up that we are doing, but it would be great if our PIO officer, as well as our social media person hooked up with you and showed you what we are doing, and then maybe have suggestions of how we can augment that, that would be great. Okay, thank you again.
Our last speaker's card, Madam Mayor, is from Ms. Sarah Patricia Wiso, and she would like to discuss with the council issues in the city.
No, I'm sorry. Good evening, councilmembers and residents. First thing, it's, your minute, your countdown is pretty annoying, it's very loud and obnoxious, so you might want to lower it a little. I mean, we can see the timing right there. I wanted to mention that I had seen the video posted on the Facebook page for the city regarding all the improvements we've done with the air, but you guys failed to mention all the work that the residents, that the coalition groups, that the environmental groups have done. Without all that collaboration and all that, bringing it to the attention of the board, I don't think we would have made as many strides as we have. So, it would be nice that you guys mentioned that. Also regarding the air subcommittee, the issue I had with the air subcommittee is that you guys decided to have Tetra Tech as a consultant, which basically just regurgitated all the information that the AQMD was giving regarding the air quality and basically watered down the situation. Now, there's a website called Research Project of Good Jobs First, and it shows individual penalty records for certain companies, and Tetra Tech, back in 2002, had violations for workplace safety or health violations. They also had some in 2012, and they had environmental violations back in 2011. So, as a resident that's very aware with the situation that's been going on with the air, the fact that Tetra Tech says that there's nothing to worry about, that the air is okay, I don't have much confidence in that. Another thing, I was here at the last city council meeting, and I noticed you guys are getting grants for environmental, for electric vehicles, for plug-ins, and I remember that at one of the meetings, one of the city council people suggested you guys look for grants for air purifiers, and four out of five of you voted against that. So, I want to see, when are you guys gonna address that? It's nice to have a dog park that, by the way, isn't even in Paramount, it's in Southgate, but when are we gonna address the air purifier situation? Thank you.
No more speaker cards, Madam Mayor. However, the last presentation is here, the one that we were unable to do, she just walked in a little while ago.
Okay. And then, at the next council meeting, if you could just give her a report to you on the air purifier situation and the fact that we did do the research and what we found out, that would be helpful for the public to understand what really took place there. Okay, so Georgina, if you could come forward, we have a presentation for you. We have so many good things to say about you. Okay, so Georgina is the recipient of the first mayor's Healthy Heart Award for her outstanding involvement in the Healthy Paramount Program that began in September in conjunction with Apple Care Medical Group. Along that line is Brenda Olmos, by chance, here from Apple Care? Okay. Last month marked the halfway point for the year-long outreach effort, which features monthly activities, health screenings, and other offerings to encourage fitness, good nutrition, and overall healthy lifestyle among our residents. There's been a Zumba class, a walk with the fire department, a walk with the Sheriff's Department, and a doc talk, and more. When her great, with her great participation, Georgina has been consistent in helping to make this program a success and a wonderful resource. She's a shining example of how physical fitness is important for the well-being and healthy lifestyle of so many. We are pleased to present her with the Healthy Heart Award. And I know I was at several of these events, and I can tell you, Georgina was out there in front cheerleading everybody, and she was still Zumba long before I gave up and said enough's enough, so she's really an activist over there in our community, she's been a tremendous help to the city council and helped getting the word out on this program, and we do sincerely appreciate all your efforts. Congratulations.
Thank you. It's a great program, it makes us realize that our health is important. Sometimes we're too busy working with the kids, work, everything, but we forgot about ourselves, and we need to think about how important it is for us to be healthy so we can take care of our family and to do better at work. And I would like to see everybody at this program. Apple Care, it's always bringing something new and exciting, so I will be seeing you. Thank you, and thank you for the award.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to the consent calendar, and before I accept a motion, I would like to disqualify myself on 30579, 305939, 30628, 30604. Those are items that were made payable to my former employer during the time I was employed there, so at this time, I will abstain on those items.
Make a motion, we move, approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Hanson. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Guian?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
I make the motion that we approve the items stated by Mayor Lemmons.
Second.
Moved by Martinez and seconded by Hoffmeyer. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Guian?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes, abstaining. Item twelve, oral report on the County of Los Angeles Public Library.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. Librarian Iris Illogin is here to go over with the council some of the fund programs that the Paramount Library has to offer to our residents, so come on up, Iris.
Hello.
I'll fix that for you, Iris.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Ms. Martinez, Ms. Guian, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Hoffmeyer, and the residents of Paramount. My name is Iris Illogin, and I'm the Community Library Manager of the Paramount Library. Thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to give you an overview of the programs and services that the Paramount Library offers the community, besides our weekly storytime programs and daily homework help. I don't want to take too much of your time, so I just wanted to go over a few things that we've done so far in 2018, and some of the events that we have coming up in the year. In January, we partnered with the Southeast Los Angeles Workforce Development Board to provide our customers with a brief introduction to CalJobs, an online resource that helps both seekers, job seekers, and employers find a career and find a candidate, as well as one on resume help. In February, we had a popotea art workshop for adults. Popotea is the art of weaving straw into pictures. The pictures on the slide were created by library customers. We also had a drum circle in honor of African-American Heritage Month in February, and we've been doing one-on-one computer tutoring for older adults. We are currently booked through the end of April for this service. We have a few exciting programs coming up. We have partnered with the United Farm Workers Foundation to provide a citizenship information session in April. Attendees will learn about eligibility requirements, how to overcome problematic situations, a fee waiver for the $720 fee about the interview, and how to receive free legal assistance. In May, we will be offering a naturalization application assistance workshop. United Farm Workers will provide individual assistance by filling out and reviewing each citizenship application. For this workshop, we will have room for about ten to fifteen people. Our parent-child workshops are conducted twice a year, and the library's spring session is coming up. The parent-child workshop is a five-week play-based program for toddlers and their parents. The family play space is set up like a playtime, but each week we have a guest resource professional who spends one-on-one time with each family to discuss child development issues. We've had nutritionists, pediatricians, pediatric dentists, and speech pathologists before, and we always try to find someone who lives or works locally so that our patrons may be able to go to them, to contact them for further questions after the program. I think most of you know about the library open house in April. Thanks to your support of the library and the friends of the library, we'll be able to host this event. We will have a jazz trio to entertain the adults and an awesome magician to entertain those that are young and the young at heart. We'll have opportunity drawings and giveaways. A plaque will be dedicated to Ethel Hilliard, who was a longtime Friends of the Library member, educator, and Paramount historian. We will be celebrating Asian American Heritage Month with a Chinese calligraphy workshop for adults and a Tibetan mandala art activity for the kids in May. In May and September, we've also partnered with nonprofit L.A. Makerspace for two different workshops for youth. We will have a four-week workshop on e-textiles so that tweens and teens may expand their understanding of circuits by making smart wearables that make sounds react to touch or glow, and in September, we will have the four-week workshop on coding with Minecraft. In June, we will have a bento box demonstration, and that month will also kick off our summer discovery program. Every Saturday from June 16th through July 28th, we'll have different performers, we'll have magicians, jugglers, animals, and more at the library, so please keep a lookout on our online and paper calendars. We will be hosting an author talk in August. Jean Aguilera, the author of Mexican-American Boxing in Los Angeles, will be at the library. I think he's also going to bring a boxer with him, so that's going to be exciting. And if you really have no inclination to leave your house, there are ways to use library resources without leaving home. With your library card, you may check out eBooks and read them on your computer or handheld device. You may listen to downloadable audiobooks at home or in your car just by downloading the Overdrive and Libby apps. With Freego Music, you can download up to five songs a week for free for you to keep forever or until you delete them from your music library. These songs are all D R M-free, which means that there are no digital restrictions, and you can move the songs from device to device or even send them and share them with your friends. Publa, on the other hand, is just a streaming service. With your library card, you can stream an album for one week. Publa also has movies that you can stream on your computer or handheld device for three days, along with eBooks and audiobooks. Canopy is our new service that we just purchased for our customers. This is one that I'm really excited about because you can use your library card to stream over thirty thousand films from outstanding independent filmmakers, documentaries, and RB Digital is our service that lets library card holders download digital copies of magazines like Us Weekly, Vanity Fair, Vogue, Rolling Stone, and many more. These are digital copies that you can also keep on your computer or device forever until you delete them. We have a variety of online learning resources, but the most popular and sought after is Lynda.com. The Lynda membership that you get with your library card costs over three hundred dollars per year if you sign up on your own, but with your library card, you get it for free. It's an awesome platform that provides a vast online library of instructional videos taught by industry professionals covering the latest software, creative and business skills, including coding, Photoshop, Microsoft Office, and business management. A lot of businesses use this for career development, and you can use it too. Other online resources available, learning resources available to you are Gale courses and Universal Class, and additionally, you may use Mango languages or PowerSpeak languages to learn a new language. As you may or may not know, Paramount Library is part of the L.A. County Library System, and we are one of eighty-seven community libraries, so I also wanted to present some system-wide initiatives that we've introduced recently. We started the Great Readaway last year for customers ages twenty-one and younger. The program allows our young patrons to pay off their fines by reading at the library. We take off five dollars from their fines for every hour that they read. Career Online High School is a program that allows you to earn an accredited high school diploma online. It's not a GED, it's an actual diploma, and also comes with a career certificate in your choice of eight high-demand fields. I believe we've actually had one or two career online high school graduates that are from The L.A. County, sorry, another service that I personally love and use a lot is Discover and Go. You may receive, reserve free family passes to our partner museums with your library card. New passes are released at the beginning of the month, but the passes are first come first served, and they are snapped up quickly, so my suggestion is to log on before the end of the first of the month to reserve your tickets, and reservations may be made up to three months in advance. The L.A. County Library System offers all of these resources and more, so please feel free to visit us at the Paramount Library if you have any questions, and we're always happy to help. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope to see you at the library soon.
Thank you. Okay, next is Resolution Number 18004, approving participation in the Institute of Local Government Speaking.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. For many years now, the city has performed a number of efforts to contribute to a more sustainable environment here in the community. However, we've never really bothered to stop and take an inventory of these efforts until now. This was prompted by our decision late last year to become involved in the energy purchasing program that we now know is called the Clean Power Alliance. Additionally, we recently became involved in the environmental efforts that the Gateway Cities Council of Governments has been doing for about a year or two now. So, in discussions with the representative from the League of California Cities, we actually learned of a program that the League offers through their Educational Research Division. This program allows cities to be recognized for their sustainable practices and policies, and this is called the Beacon Program. So, not only do you get recognition statewide from the League, but you also receive technical assistance on furthering your sustainability efforts. But before we launch into the Beacon Program, the council needs to pass a resolution authorizing our involvement with the program, and that's what we are presenting to you tonight, and our Public Works Director, Mr. Christopher Cashwell, handle the edit. Chris?
Thank you, John, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As part of the city's sustainability program, we've been looking to partner with other programs that promote goals of creating a more sustainable community. The Beacon Program is an initiative of the Institute of Local Government, which is the nonprofit training and education arm of the League of California Cities. Participation in the Beacon Program provides a framework for cities to implement and share best practices, and the program is focused on the creation of healthier, more efficient, sustainable communities. The Beacon Program also honors efforts by cities who do show efforts to save energy and engage in sustainable practices. The Beacon Program focuses on advancing participants' achievement in five areas of accomplishment. Those are agency greenhouse gas reductions, community greenhouse gas reductions, agency energy savings, natural gas savings, and sustainability best practice activities. As I mentioned earlier, the Beacon Program also provides recognition opportunities for cities that make strides in the five areas of accomplishment, which include accomplishment and sustainability best practice activities. Based upon the amount of reduction of GHG in the environment within both the organization or the agency and the community, we could qualify for a silver, gold, or platinum level Beacon Award, which is handed out annually at the League of California Cities Conference. To date, the city of Paramount has implemented sustainability best practices in all ten best practices area of the Beacon Program. Completion of these practices has qualified the city for Silver Level Sustainability Best Practices Beacon Spotlight Award. Many of these practices are not new, but in many cases have been in place for many years. The practices in the year that they began are, first, under energy efficiency and conservation, back in 2001, we upgraded all of our traffic signals to LED signal heads. This has saved us approximately a thousand dollars a year in energy savings per signal. When doing facility upgrades and lighting, we now change out to LED lights, and we started that practice back in 2015. Under our water and wastewater systems, back in 1992, we began the wide-scale use of reclaimed water to irrigate most of our parks and medians, and in 2008, we started the use of a weather-based irrigation control system to regulate and improve the efficiency of city facilities. In 2015, as part of our water conservation efforts, we modified water use practices of city facilities, including installing water-saving devices and waterless urinals at many of our facilities. In 2018, we started the longstanding program of installing catch basin screen and inserts to prevent trash and added debris from entering the rivers and making their way to the ocean. And in 2015, we started the installation of drought-tolerant landscapes at various city Moving on to some of our green building practices, in 2013, we started to require that developers of new and significantly rebuilt facilities install stormwater management infrastructure to address and treat runoff. It was also in 2013 that we adopted a green street ordinance that requires that street resurfacing and reconstruction projects incorporate ways to slow, filter, and cleanse stormwater runoff from impervious surfaces. In 2010, we began participation in the PACE Program, which allows homeowners to obtain financing for energy and water efficiency products, projects that can be repaid through their annual property tax bill. Moving on to waste reduction and recycling, in 2006, we required all contractors to recycle concrete and asphalt when doing resurfacing or concrete replacement work in the city. In 2016, we partnered with our tree trimming contractor, West Coast Arbor's, for the urban wood pathway program to recycle wood chips from city trees into re-plant trees that are removed. In 2007, via our curbside recycling program, we reduced the number of pounds of waste produced per resident, and also in that same year, we began an internal review of our office practices here at the city to reduce impacts on the environment and reduce On the climate-friendly purchasing best management practice, we started back in 1989 using rubberized asphalt in all of our resurfacing work, and not only have we been able to recycle up to four thousand old tires over that time, we found that the use of rubberized asphalt is also very efficient in terms of its wearability and durability. When possible, the city also purchases low or zero emission hybrid or alternative fuel vehicles, and this, again, we started this practice back in 1996. On renewable energy and low-carbon fuels, over at our city yard facility just up the street, we, back in 2010, we installed solar panels. And for efficient transportation, we applied for and received a grant to extend a dedicated bike path, which is existing now between Somerset and Lake bike path, which is existing now between Somerset and Lakewood Boulevard, and to be able to take that up to Paramount Rosecrans, which further reduces greenhouse gas emissions. On land use and community design, back in two thousand and sixteen, we developed our Bicycle Master Plan, again, that reduced, encourages greenhouse gas reductions. And on open space and offsetting carbon emissions, we began in two thousand and seventeen participating, as John mentioned, with the Gateway Cities Card on their Climate Action Plan. Starting in nineteen ninety-seven, we started implementing focused tree planting programs for neighborhood and parks, and also back last year in two thousand and seventeen, as you recall, we joined Community Choice Aggregation Program, which is now known as Clean Power Alliance, which will be able to provide fifty percent renewable energy to our residents and businesses, and also will make a huge impact, again, to reduce GHG impact to the climate. On community and individual action, this year, we started our inaugural Clutter-Free Paramount Program. That was back in January, which was an event for residents to responsibly dispose of e-waste, large items, green waste, and other documents. So with all those various items in mind, as we mentioned, we're in a really good position to start participating in the Beacon Program. But there are a couple of things that we do need to do. First before you this evening is a resolution which needs to be adopted by the council, which commits the agency to participate in the program, which we are recommending that you approve. We need to designate a lead staff person as a point of contact, which would be myself. And finally, as part of this, the city would be making a commitment that they will seek to implement energy efficiency or sustainability programs, policies, or procedures that achieve measurable greenhouse gas reductions and promote energy conservation activities in the community. So with that, we are recommending that the council adopt Resolution Number eighteen zero zero four, and also, just as a little bit of a shameless plug for all of David Johnson, just wanted to promote that we are having our first Sustainability Fair. It's a sustainable Paramount, green and renewable, and that'll be on Saturday, March twenty-fourth, from eleven to two at the Paramount Civic Center. And there's some flyers in the back, if anybody's interested in more details on that. But with that, that concludes my presentation, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Along with the motion at this time, do we need to designate, or is part of the motion that it's...
It's part of the reso, I believe, right, Chris?
Yeah, it's actually part of the application that we just...
Okay, perfect. So I'll entertain a motion?
Who make the motion, agree by title only, adopt Resolution Number eighteen point zero zero four.
Moved by Hanson, seconded by Gian. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gian?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice President Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Leavitt?
Yes.
I have a question regarding the Sustainability Fair. Do we have vendors yet?
We are working on it very diligently, and I'm looking at David, probably about ten, I would say, about ten vendors that are lined up.
Are any of those David ones you can share off the top of your head?
Actually, it's not just me doing this, so it's, I think, Chris, you have a couple?
Sure. I mean, we're talking with a lot of our various government partners, Water Replenishment District, Central Basin Municipal Water District, County Sanitation District. They all have various sustainability programs in place themselves, they do a lot of public education on. We're also talking with some of the people that we've worked with before, particularly on drought-tolerant landscaping. I believe we've tried to set up some home efficiency seminars through our local Home Depot. They do various workshops and things of that sort.
We also nailed down Southern California Edison, so they will be there to actually give a workshop on how to make your home more efficient, more energy efficient as well.
Fun stuff. Discovery Science Center is coming out, so kids can come out and actually build their own little pot out of newspaper, and then they're going to plant a seed in that little pot, so Discovery Science Center is doing that. We also have the Aquarium of the Pacific coming out, and they're going to do a presentation on things that we can do to make sure trash doesn't get out into the oceans and damage to marine life.
And do we currently have spaces available, vendor spaces?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I would just like to encourage anyone in the audience, you know, who may have information on this or have visited a fair about sustainability or anything else, to please contact David at Parks and Recreation if there's a topic that you would like to see covered at the fair, you know, please let us know so that we can do our best to get them there. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item fourteen, which is the contract with County of L.A. for homeless services.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. As we all have seen in the media and also in person, the issue of homelessness continues to be at the forefront of everybody's attention. Last year, L.A. County voters decided to do something about it by voting to increase the sales tax to address homelessness in L.A. County. Through this ballot measure, individual grant programs were established to help cities study ways to help the homelessness in their communities. The studies that would be created would then be used to create programs to address homelessness. So rather than waiting, we decided to take an active role, and we jumped on the first round of grants that are out. We applied for, and we received a grant to perform the initial study. We actually teamed up with the City of Bellflower on this, and we're the lead agency in the grant and the study. So the item before you tonight is twofold. The first part of it is an agreement with the county to receive the grant money, and the next part of the item is an agreement with a nonprofit group to perform the study. And Adriana Lopez, our Public Safety Director, will handle the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor and councilmembers, good afternoon or evening. As John mentioned, in March of two thousand and seventeen, the voters in Los Angeles County approved Measure H, which authorized a quarter cent sales tax for the next ten years. The tax-generated funds will be used to fund mental health services, as well as substance abuse treatments, emergency and affordable housing, as well as other supportive services for homeless individuals. Currently have about fifty-seven thousand individuals living in L.A. County that are considered homeless. With that, the County of Los Angeles, like John said, offered a grant for the cities to create a comprehensive plan to combat homelessness in their city. And in October of two thousand and seventeen, the city of Paramount submitted a joint application with the City of Bellflower for the development of individual homeless action plans. Each city applied and received fifty thousand dollars to create their individual plan. The grant monies can only be used to develop the plan, which must outline how to prevent and combat homelessness in each city. Grant funds will be used to pay for the entire cost of the plan development, which cannot exceed fifty thousand dollars per city. The city of Paramount has taken the responsibility of administering the grant with L.A. County, and the city of Bellflower will assume a partnership role. We will receive twenty-five thousand dollars at the beginning of the grant cycle and twenty-five thousand dollars at the completion of the cycle. The grant requires that the city enter into a contract with L.A. County, and we are to select a consultant, and we selected PATH, which stands for People Assisting the Homeless. And we have a representative from PATH here today, so if you have any questions, she'll be happy to answer any questions. And we had already established a great working relationship with PATH, so we've already been on the forefront of trying to combat this issue. The plan will consist, the comprehensive plan will consist of identifying future and long-term goals for the city. And we will not have to, we are not legally bound to act on any of the things that are mentioned in our plan. However, by developing this plan, we are going to be officially recognized as an active partner in trying to combat homelessness in our city. With that, it is recommended that the mayor or her designate enter into a contract by and between the County of Los Angeles and select a consultant and enter into a contract with PATH.
Thank you. Is the representative from PATH here? I think she said, could you come forward, please? Please. And before we move into questions from the council, can you just tell us a little bit about PATH?
Sure. PATH is an organization that started in the eighties in Los Angeles and has expanded to become a statewide agency that is addressing homelessness and help people who are experiencing homelessness across the state, so from San Jose all the way to San Diego. Our work in Paramount comes primarily with our association with the Gateway Cities Council of Governments and their homelessness committee. I'm not sure exactly on the exact name of that committee. Yeah, and we also have a relationship with Kingdom Causes Bellflower that does a lot of work in the city of Paramount as well.
So in your role as a consultant, what exactly would your duties be to the city of Paramount?
Yeah, our primary duties would be convening stakeholder meetings, so meetings with various homeless services providers, so from organizations like PATH and Kingdom Causes Bellflowers to healthcare organizations, any substance use treatment programs in the city, basically any city, any provider that touches homelessness in the city, as well as a meeting with faith communities that are helping homeless, people who are experiencing homelessness in the city, and city departments. So I know that homelessness touches various different city departments, and we want to hear from those city departments before recommending anything.
Any questions? I have one more.
Yeah?
We recently met with the representative, Lynda Johnson, from Supervisor Han's office on the H Initiative, and Mike, during the meeting, it was really interesting to me that our Public Safety Director talked about lots of her encounters, you know, with our homeless community and the need for short-term services over long-term services, something as simple as, where can I just go take a shower at? Where can I get clean clothes at? Is there anything involved in the services that, you know, you would talk to and consult with? Has that been discussed with you before? Is anything moving in that direction? It seemed very relevant to me to address immediate issue instead of long-term issues, and I'm just wondering if anything's moving in that direction.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have anything super specific that I could point you to, but I do know that we are in talks with like the Alameda Corridor, Transit Corridor, about showers and hand-washing stations, and there's always looking for places that those could be put, because that's really the biggest barrier that we come up against. With the passage of Measure H, there is funding for things like that, but it's mostly about getting things, getting a community behind, saying like, yeah, we want that in our community, so.
Perfect. Okay. But it is something that's been brought to your attention before, so it is something that's been about it.
Definitely, yeah. We're trying to do our best to figure out the places where that would work.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Make a motion, will you approve this item?
Second.
Moved by Martinez and seconded by Hoffmeyer. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gian?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice President Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Leavitt?
Yes.
Our next item is a public hearing for amending ordinance number one seven eight on the zoning order, changing the official zoning map of the city of Paramount within Area Two and the zone change for two twenty-eight along the north side of Alondra Boulevard, generally between Vermont Avenue and Colorado Avenue from light manufacturing to commercial manufacturing at one five seven five oh Vermont Avenue and seventy-eight thirty-one Alondra Boulevard. And can we have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. The next two items are actually related. Such, we'll have one staff report that covers both of these items, however, both items are public hearings, so you'll need to treat them separately, so just know, though, that we're covering both staff reports in this one item. So the first item that we're looking at tonight deals with the zone change, as you mentioned, from manufacturing to commercial manufacturing. The second item is the general plan amendment that is related to the zone change. The property, as you mentioned, this will, where this will occur is actually on the north side of Alondra Boulevard between Vermont and Colorado. The zone change will better reflect, propose use that's coming to this location, and will also provide for a buffer between the residential that's to the south and the manufacturing to the north. And our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Chung, will handle the item. Kevin?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. As the city manager mentioned, these items before you tonight are a request for a zone change and general plan amendment for two properties along Alondra Boulevard at one five seven five zero Vermont Avenue and seven eight eight one Alondra Boulevard. The current zoning for both properties is M1 light manufacturing. With this request, both properties would be rezoned to CM, which is commercial manufacturing. And if the city council were to approve this zone change, it would also be necessary to amend the general plan to redesignate both properties from central industrial district to central business district. The zone change and general plan amendment are needed to accommodate a new business coming to one five seven five zero Vermont. This business manufactures tactical hunting and outdoors equipment and clothing, and it will also have an onsite retail component as well. The current zoning and general plan designation does not allow for this type of business use. Ultimately, with the zone change and general plan amendment, commercial uses like this would be allowed, and future industrial uses would no longer be permitted. For background, on January tenth, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the zone change and general plan amendment for this area along Alondra Boulevard. This is known as Area Two, as another area in Paramount was also considered for a similar action, but the Planning Commission did not approve that item. As you know, the city adopted its zoning map in nineteen sixty-two, and the city council has the authority to amend zones in accordance with provisions in the Paramount Municipal Code. State law requires that zoning and general plan designations remain consistent with each other, and that's why staff's requests for zone changes are accompanied with requests for general plan amendments. And these are current photos of the subject abutting properties for the zone change and general plan amendment. The property at the top is on the northeast corner of Alondra and Vermont, and the property on the bottom is at the northwest corner of Alondra and Colorado. And this is an aerial view showing the current and proposed zoning for these two properties. And to orient you, this is Alondra Boulevard running west to east, and this is Vermont Avenue, this is Colorado Avenue, both running north and south. And again, both of these properties are currently ZO M1 and are being proposed for CM. As you can see from the aerial, adjacent properties to the south and to the east are either C3 or PDPS and are used for commercial and retail purposes. The proposed zoning from M1 to CM would be more in line with these existing uses and uses in nearby downtown Paramount, which is immediately to the east. And this is another aerial view showing the current and proposed general plan designations. The general plan amendment would change the property on the northeast corner of Alondra and Vermont from central industrial district to central business district. This would be a logical change, considering the abutting property to the east, and other properties on Alondra to the south and further to the east have the same central business district designation, which are all shown in red here. As part of the proposed zone change, an environmental analysis was performed by the city's environmental consultant, and no negative impacts were found with this request, and therefore, a negative declaration is recommended. So to summarize, the requested zone change and general plan amendment will eliminate future industrial uses in this area and allow for commercial uses. It will provide for land use uniformity, considering the existing uses already in the area, and it will help to promote Paramount's local economy with retail and commercial possibilities. So with that, staff recommends your approval of the proposed zone change and general plan amendment, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, before we continue with questions from councilmembers, is it possible for you to give a very short description of the difference between light manufacturing and commercial manufacturing?
Right, so light manufacturing and commercial, right. So with M1 light manufacturing, this is a manufacturing operation which may not be as heavy as, say, for example, a plastics manufacturing company or oil refinery, downgrading to, or de-intensifying to CM, commercial manufacturing. That would be something along the lines of a company that... That would be something along the lines of a company that produces some type of item and then might warehouse those items for distribution, and also it might sell those items at a retail storefront.
So would it be fair to say, then, that commercial manufacturing is something that doesn't like have a heavy noise volume, pollution factors, all of those things that we're trying to move away from?
That would be correct. Again, going from the manufacturing zone, M1, to CM, it would be a de-intensification of the land use.
Okay. Questions from staff at this time, I mean, from councilmembers at this time? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone who's wishing to give testimony in favor of this item should come forward at this time. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition should come forward at this time?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved by Martinez, seconded by Hoffmeyer to close the public hearing. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Leavitts.
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt a negative declaration relative to zone change number 228.
Second.
Moved by Martinez, seconded by Hoffmeyer. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Keon.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Leavitts.
Yes.
And as previously stated, the report for this second item is the same, and it is also a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Hanson to close the public hearing. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Keon.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Leavitts.
Yes.
We can wish to read by title only and adopt Resolution Number 18-003.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Martinez. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Keon.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Leavitts.
Yes. Okay, the next item is the Paramount Pond Ice Resurfacing.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. The Paramount Pond at the corner of Jackson and Paramount has become a popular local attraction, and believe it or not, it'll turn 20 years old next year.
Oh my goodness.
The attraction at this location, as you know, are the art pieces and the ice surface, the faux ice surface that we have there. However, that ice surface is in really bad shape. It's deteriorating, it's, there's holes in it and stuff, and so we need to replace it. As we mentioned in the mid-year budget, we have a balance in the art fund that we would like to use to replace this surface, and Chris Cash, our Public Works Director, will handle the item. Chris?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the Council, as John mentioned, the pond is coming up to almost 20 years now, so I remember it fondly when I was part of my elementary school public works program. But anyways, the pond itself has really become one of our landmark locations here in town and really is a cornerstone of our downtown. As we all know, the pond was built to reflect Paramount's history with ice skating and the Xaboni Ice Machine. And the original ice surface was actually a decorative concrete product called Lithocrete. And basically Lithocrete is concrete with colored glass that's applied in a decorative pattern. The original surface got discolored over time due to wear, and frankly, from a lot of coffee from Starbucks. And as a result, the surface became stained to the point that it was fairly noticeable, and it was also sort of beyond our ability to get rid of that. There were also some flaws in the original application of Lithocrete, and that the base concrete color was frankly too light. And more importantly, the original Lithocrete was not sealed, and as a result, you know, it really exacerbated the problem of staining. However, as a product itself, it's structurally, it's very good. I mean, it's concrete. And so it's a product that's very reliable in wide-scale use, and as we get to, it's a product that we are going to like to hopefully return to. So there's just a little bit of history here. This is actually a shot of the pond fairly soon after we completed it, and the ice is reflecting the original Lithocrete that was used. And, went too far. There we go. Okay. So, and so as I mentioned, the original surface needed to be replaced. So in 2011, in an effort to basically revitalize the ice surface, it was replaced with a different product. And it was on the recommendation of the original architect who designed the pond. And basically, it was a new product that used colored glass that was bound together with an epoxy binder. It did originally look more ice-like, but turned out to be much lower in structural integrity than what was advertised. And unfortunately, chunks of the surface were dug up, often due to vandalism, and as we attempted to repair it, it was not a repair that was unnoticedable. The colors didn't match, the surface was difficult to keep in the same condition, and it was also very difficult to keep dirt off of it because it was very porous, and as we were trying to try to clean it, it actually ended up doing more damage. So on to my little pictures here. This is sort of, sort of a before and after. You can see the existing surface there. It's become pitted, it's become discolored. And then next to it is actually a shot of an existing Lithocrete application in front of Iceland, which was done probably a year or two after we did the pond to really try and tie it in. Still in really good shape. The coloration on that one's a little different than what the pond originally was, and probably is a little bluer than we're going to want to use at the pond, but overall, it's in pretty good shape, and which is sort of another indication of that it's probably a good product for us to use. So as I mentioned, we do want to return to the original Lithocrete. We know that it's properly durable for public spaces, and it's really been in use for decades in public areas with high traffic. As I mentioned, there are some lessons learned from the original process in terms of the concrete color. We're going to probably start with a darker base color, maybe a little darker mix of glass, and most importantly, we will have it properly sealed at the conclusion. And then, like all sealers, it requires a regular refreshment that will become part of our maintenance rituals in Public Works to be done on a periodic basis. Here are some examples of Lithocrete product in action. All of these are in high-traffic areas, highly decorative. You might recognize Lakewood's War Memorial there with the airplane. And in fact, the product is actually used all over Disneyland, and from sort of a good housekeeping seal of approval. If it can be used at Disneyland, and if it can hold up to the traffic there, and they're usually really good about, in terms of decorative stuff, about using the latest and greatest, we also think that that's sort of a good reference, too, in terms of product. So we did receive a quote from Shawn Suns, who owns the Lithocrete process to install the new surface in the amount of $199,105, which would include the installation of the new Lithocrete, as well as the demolition of the existing surface. This is all will be funded out of our art fund. And as I mentioned, Lithocrete is a patented concrete process, which is offered exclusively by Shawn Suns, and as such, due to the sole source of the product is exempt under the city's purchasing policy from competitive bidding. However, as the purchase amount is in excess of $25,000, we are requesting the council's approval of the purchase. But with that, we are recommending that the council authorize the purchase, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Questions?
Who should remove the item and approve it?
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Hanson. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Keon.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Leavitts.
Yes.
And now we have comments and committee reports from councilmembers and staff, and we'll go ahead and start with Vice Mayor Martinez. Do you have anything?
This past Saturday, Sister Cities hosted a luncheon for the mayor of Topeka, Presidente Fonseca, and he was a very, very kind man, and I want to applaud the leadership of Frank Barazza. I saw him in the audience, is he still here? So Sister Cities, they were, they are involved in a program called People to People Program, Sharing Goodwill. And Mayor Presidente Fonseca will return in June, and I'm hoping that when he's here in our city, that it will be during a city council meeting, that he can come and meet all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
I have nothing really to report, except I've been sampling some of the new restaurants in Paramount after I read the Friday memo about the ones that were doing well in art. I think the restaurants we have in town are doing very well, and the food is good, and I think maybe some of them need a little tender loving care, but other than that, I think everything's going well. And I'm looking forward to the two new restaurants opening up on Alondra Boulevard.
Councilmember Dan?
Yeah, a couple weeks or, a couple weeks ago, I kind of briefly touched on the air emissions and Rule 1469. And last Friday, as you guys are aware, there was a meeting in Diamond Bar, and there was a vote to either pass 1469, Rule 1469 as it stands, and there was a great push for there to be a stricter regulation. So the AQMD Governing Board voted 75, I mean, 75, 725, to stall the passing of Rule 1469 to look further into stricter regulations for hex chrome emissions, and that goes across Southern California from chrome electroplating and chrome anodizing operations, and we have one here in Paramount. And then also, I was able to attend in the City of Commerce where they discussed, the AQMD discussed AB 617 and 134, and I'll just tell you briefly, AB 617, a new law, and it's going to target the emissions. And John King from the city was there, so it was good to see him there. Target emissions and develop plans to reduce community exposure to unhealthy air, and they're going to continue monitoring. And then there's something called VARCT implementation, and that will amend the rules to ensure best available retrofit control technology is required. There's limited fundings in the first year, so we're hoping that Paramount gets some of those funds that we need to apply for. And then AB 34 deals with emissions and vehicles, and I'm hoping that in the last month, I've gotten two complaints about the buses that idle in the park at Progress Park, the Easy Rider bus. So I'm hoping if we can apply for some of these air emission through the Carl Moyer program under AB 134, that we can use that to maybe change the emissions in our buses around town. And then at the City of Commerce, I learned that the AQMD talks about Paramount a lot, and they always talk about how they've learned so much from the city of Paramount, and Paramount is a poster child for all the things that they've learned about chrome six and the air emissions. But there was another poster child that they talked about at, in the City of Commerce with this AQMD meeting, and it's for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. The Make-A-Wish Foundation is a foundation that provides children with the last wish, if you will, and there's a little girl who will be the poster child for the Make-A-Wish Foundation from Paramount. She's five years old, she has cancer, and it's her 30th anniversary of the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and they chose this little girl from Paramount. So you will see her picture all across the, all across the cities for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. So just to keep, you know, her in our prayers and recognize her for that. And I don't sit on any committees, I haven't been appointed to any, so I can't comment on any committee updates, but I would like to take, thank everyone for your continued support as I come close to completing my first year in office, and it has been challenging, but with any worthwhile goal, there's always going to come some adversity. And overall, it's been successful, and I will continue to work hard to represent all of you, so thank you for the past year of your support.
Yes, last Thursday, over at Spanning Park, the Musa Moms put on a fantastic lunch, which I attended, and it was outstanding food, actually, a very good home cooked. And today, the school district had Taco Tuesdays, which was the same thing. These were both to raise money for PEP. They also had, which I had never had before, Hawaiian ice there. For anyone who's never had Hawaiian ice, that is just outstanding, especially with the ice cream on the bottom. You didn't have one, right?
I've had it before, it is really good.
It was outstanding. They had a guy there doing that, too, and all his, he was donating everything to the PEP Scholarship Fund, too, so it was interesting going to both of those events.
In Spanish, those are called dorias, and in any of the Mexican places, you can get that same ice cream with that same crushed ice, they're really good.
It was good. Actually, look at Hawaiian or Samoan, one of the two, yeah, big guy.
Yeah, there's a new place I know opening over by Casa Garena, too. It's called Kate's. It's going to be Thai ice cream, is what they specialize in, so I'm anxious to try that. It looks really different in their Instagram photos. I wanted to report that when I went to Civic Night at the Elks Lodge, there were, you know, great awards handed out to several people there, but the one that really stood out to me was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, I believe it was Citizen of the Year for the JR OTC.
Colonel.
Colonel. And when they read his resume, it was absolutely outstanding, the kind of leadership that our children are able to have right now at the high school. And they were also talking about the ranks of the JR OTC and the kids going through, and they're moving into the top 30 that are going into a contest, and these are out of JR OTC classes throughout the entire United States, from what I understand. So you're talking thousands of entries, and our kids right now are going into the finals at number 30. So our best wishes for them, and I'll tell you something, if leadership in getting them there means anything, this gentleman has certainly done his service to our country as well as to our students. Also, last week, I intended an AQMD meeting in Diamond Bar to address the board regarding their efforts in the city of Paramount, and it came to my attention that the expenditures that they've made in the city of Paramount so far to invest in finding sources and setting up monitoring system and engagement with our residents was over $1 million. And for any government agency to invest that much in the community is really outstanding. So I wanted to thank them for all of their efforts, and I also want to thank our staff for all of the work that they did in working with the AQMD. It was said again that the way that Paramount handled this issue is going to serve as a model for not only other cities throughout the region, but for the nation, on what a city can do to cooperate and turn around such a bad situation. So kudos to our staff. Thank you for all, all of the hard work that have helped to expedite this, and the AQMD was very grateful that we did come to thank them for the services that they provided. And with that, are there staff reports?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there sure are. In relation to what Councilmember Keon mentioned about AB 617, we did have a staff member there. We are requesting that we be put on the list to be one of the cities that is monitored through AB 617, so we're hoping we could get that. So anyway, so that's, that's coming up soon. I do want to give a full report to the council once more details of that comes up, but we do have till May 7th to give AQMD our name, which we're already doing, that we want to be put on the list. So that's coming up. In regards to other things, March is a busy month. Parks and Rec thought that December was busy, but March is turning into be just as busy. There are several things that I want to remind the council and the public about. First off, next week, Metro, the LA County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, they're holding community meetings regarding a proposed light rail line that will go from Artesia to Union Station. We're a little disappointed, once again, that they did not hold meetings, or they're not scheduling to hold meetings here in Paramount. We made that very clear before, that we want meetings here in Paramount because we're going to be impacted by this project. They scheduled meetings, and it wasn't in Paramount. We reissued our anger, if you will, that they didn't choose Paramount again. However, they have meetings, two of them are next week. One of them is in Artesia, the other one is in, I'm sorry, Downey. Thank you, John. One of them is in Artesia, the other one is in, I'm sorry, Downey, thank you, John. And we will have the canvassing neighborhoods, putting out social media, attention especially for that area of town where there could be possible property acquisition. We're told anywhere from 10 to 20 feet or more. So this is, this is definitely at the very beginning stages of the EIR, so we will be providing transportation to the meeting as well, just like what we did. When the air quality issues came up, we provided transportation for residents to go up to the AQMD building. We're going to be doing that for this round of meetings. Relating to air quality, we will, the Planning Commission is holding a special study session on the code amendments that the Air Quality Subcommittee went through, and that's going to be on March the 19th, which is a Monday. It's going to be here, since we don't have City Hall available. Then March 24th is two events, are two events. First of all, the Healthy Paramount Event at Salud Park, and also the Sustainability Fair that was discussed earlier. Also, on March 31st, the Topeka Sister Cities is holding the Dia de los Niños, so that's going to happen on March the 31st, the last day of the month. And then throughout the month, we have Little League opening days. The first one is the Paramount Girls Softball, which is this Saturday at 10:00 a.m., and then throughout the month, they will have more. So we'll put more information about this in the Friday memo, so you all can be aware of that. Moving on to PEP, March is also a very busy month for PEP. There's a lot of fundraising going on. At the back, there are flyers about some upcoming PEP fundraisers for our scholarship fund, so please be aware of those. In fact, this Thursday, my favorite, a soft-serve dessert bar that's coming up at the community center. And also, we've established a GoFundMe account for the PEP program, so we're trying to get the word out. If you'd like to donate to PEP, there's a really easy, convenient way. Am I supposed to say anything about this?
Just give a company a trace.
Oh, this is where the actual is going to go in. And that concludes comments from staff.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to add one more thing, when John brought up PEP. At my retirement event, I did receive a card where several of the city employees had donated to PEP in my name, and I just want to thank each and every one of you for that. You know how near and dear that program is to my heart and that, you know, you would make that effort and be so generous. Just thank you, each and every one of you who did that. And with that, we will stand adjourned until the March 20th meeting at 5:00 p.m., and that will take place here at Progress Park Plaza. At this time, I'm going to call to order the successor agency for the Paramount Redevelopment Agency, and could we have a roll call of council members, please?
Mayor Keon?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice President Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Levens?
Here.
Do we have any public comment cards?
No, ma'am.
Consent calendar?
Take one, consent calendar.
Second.
Moved by Hoffmeyer, seconded by Hanson. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Keon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice President Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Levens?
Yes.
And with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.